Call the Apache Junction City Council work session to order, roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
All members present, you have a quorum, your honor.
Discussion on ethical behaviors of board and commission members, Dave.
Yeah, I wanted to, the purpose of this agenda item is to generate a positive discussion between council members on ethics and professionalism on boards, commissions and the council with the understanding that the people of Apache Junction deserve open and honest communication. There have been many comments from council members over the last few years about transparency and how the folks at meetings and those watching on TV need to know what's going on and how things are done. So I have several comments on issues that I've seen come up. Currently, there is a planning and zoning commissioner who works for a business just in front of the P and Z Commission and the council on a regular basis. The owner of that business is currently suing the city. He, among others, some of whom are on the council now, had a campaign sign on the business and this individual accepted $1,100 campaign contribution from the other business, from the business, sorry. He and others have been seen meeting with the owner outside of and during breaks of open meeting. On one occasion, he and the business owner went to the chamber where the chair and the planning and zoning commission was engaged in her volunteer work and tossed a copy of the meeting minutes at her and demanded that she take care of the problem. The chair sent a letter to the commissioner demanding such behavior stop. There, a member of the Board of Adjustment with whom the business owner has an appeal pending was seen meeting with the attorney for the business following a P and Z meeting where the P and Z matter had to be rescheduled due to the appeal. Due to the relationship of the business to both the P and Z and the Board of Adjustment, this communication can be considered as ex parte, which is highly unethical activity for both board members. During a recent council meeting with the public hearing on the proposed U-Haul development, Krista got it right. She recused herself from the hearing to avoid a perception of impropriety as her and her husband have U-Haul rentals as part of their business. Discussions and chats continue on Facebook as a way to try to avoid people, as a way to try to try and avoid people seeing all the comments, new pages are created almost daily. The good news is there are people who find them on a regular basis. The bad news is not everyone is on Facebook. Apache Junction government has come a long way since incorporation in the years to follow. And I will be politically correct here, it was the good old persons network. It was alive and well. And it feels as though we're regressing back to vacuum deals and unethical meetings. Your honor, you've said many times you want to promote transparency and talked about the decrease in the number of exec sessions. How you want the people of AJ to know what's going on and how businesses, how business is being conducted. The city council must set the example. Commissions and boards need to be open and honest. There should be nothing to hide, yet there are dealings being hidden. At this point, I'd like to invite open and positive communication between council members on this issue.
Your honor?
Hold on.
I have a comment. It seems to me that when we appoint board members, we just sort of turn them loose. We, we may give them information about the board they're on, but we don't necessarily give them information on their legal responsibilities. Some boards have more legal responsibilities than others. Like the planning and zoning would have more legal responsibilities because of they're dealing with certain businesses, et cetera. The Board of Adjustment would have more legal responsibilities, whereas Parks and Recs may not. They may not have that. It seems to me that we need some kind of training that would come as soon as we appoint these folks that would also touch on those legalities if there were some included in that board.
When I, when I get my time, I'm gonna go to Joel and ask him some of those questions. And yeah, so we were constantly scrambling to fill some of these boards and we sometimes put people on there that probably may not be ideal for certain boards.
Right.
So, and maybe, maybe council needs to know too that this person, you know, maybe in between the applications and the, are approving them and talking about them. Is there a way that we can go over resumes with Joel? Is that not open meeting or should that all be discussed in open meeting? So Joel, and then a two-part question after that. Have you seen any violations? If there are violations, what is the procedure? Or is it a gray area? So that's, that's several questions there, so, sorry to pile it on you.
Well.
Is he gonna answer? Is he, are you expecting an answer right now or?
Are we gonna wait for the, when everybody to talk first and then go to Joel?
Well, I'll let Joel answer.
Yeah, let him do it.
Yeah.
I've been here over 21 years. And I think, at least most of that time, maybe not the first year, maybe not, not 1998 or 99, but I do recall meeting with board and commission members after they've been appointed by council. And I have a, a conflict of interest document. I have an open meeting document and also a Public Records Act. So I would go through that with them. In fact, I'd meet with Larry's staff and we'd talk about when they would be brought on. We'd talk about their planning and zoning requirements and duties and they'd be given this big book, which includes all sorts of things in it, same with Board of Adjustment. And also, sometimes some park and rec people, but those are the main boards that I would do. I think, and in the most, more recent past, we've done most of the boards and commissions. Not all of them, but most of them, and the critical ones are the Board of Adjustment. And they are told what a quasi judicial meeting means. And they are told not to meet with anybody. Planning and zoning, similar. Planning and zoning is not a quasi judicial forum, but it is something where if a developer attorney approaches them, can they talk to them? Yes, they can. And some developer attorneys look at it like, well, I can talk to all of them anytime I want. And it's up to the P and Z member if they feel comfortable to talk to them. And our recommendation is you don't talk to them separately. And just have everything in public. And I've always done that. And I have met with recent board and commission members where I've told them, those are the rules. Now, I don't hire an attorney for the Board of Adjustment members to be briefed. I don't do that. I handle that part of it. On the more contentious Board of Adjustment matters, I do hire an attorney at the meetings. Getting to the question of, have I seen violations in the past? Yes, I have, however, it's up to the individual member to say, okay, I'm gonna recuse myself from that because I have a conflict or it, it's inappropriate, it looks bad. It's up to that person to do it. And if they don't do it, things can happen. The decision can be challenged. And if that decision is challenged in a court of law and it's determined that, yes, that person had a conflict of interest, then the actual item can be basically thrown out. And there could actually be criminal and civil penalties also for that board member if it's done intentionally. So there are consequences. What can the council do if they, if they perceive there are issues that are going on? They can have a hearing or actually they could have a public meeting where the council decides, you know, we, I don't think we need your service anymore because we don't like what you're doing. And that's with or without cause and it's under section two dash, twenty-two dash, two A, I believe, of the city code under membership for council. So you can, you can have, council member can ask Brian or me or Kathy to put it on the agenda and we can do that and it could be for a vote or a discussion. And there is no standards for what cause or without cause means. But it is in the city code. And Kathy will probably confirm this, but I think in the last thirty-some odd years, there's been at least one commissioner member that was taken off because he had some inside information about our city limit line to the west and then went to Mesa and told them, hey, AJ's coming over. You probably want to do something about that. And Mesa did, they put up a strip annex along Meridian. So that's, that basically stopped the City of AJ from annexing too far into Maricopa County. And so that person obviously shouldn't have done that and I think the council took him off. Did I mischaracterize that, Kathy?
No, that's exactly what happened.
I wasn't here, but that's what I heard and I think that happened, that was in the eighties or nineties, correct?
That was in the eighties.
Yeah.
And there were a couple of instances after that where individuals were removed for lack of attendance.
Also, you should know that the duty of a commissioner or board member is not a paid position. So if you decide to take someone off, there is no due process rights available for them. They don't, they don't, unless you want them to speak, they don't get to speak at the hearing where you do the vote. You can make it so you can, but they don't have to. It's really your decision, it's your appointment. It's your right to appoint whoever you want. And if you have four or more votes, then that's how it works. It's a, it's a democracy still.
You, you mentioned, we've hired attorneys, I've not, in my ten years, we haven't had a lot of Board of Adjustment cases even. You'll hire an outside attorney for what reason?
If I believe it's gonna be contentious, where I think the decision might be appealed, I believe the board needs its own attorney, especially when I'm representing Larry and his staff. Because then I have a conflict. We did do that this year, for example, early on when we had another, a case involving, I think it was Bambi Johnson versus the city on a decision of Larry's regarding events. How many events does it take to get to a CUP? What triggers a CUP? That one we did and also I think it was on another, yeah, Mr. Kaplan, thank you, because he had an attorney. If there's an attorney on the other side, I would probably get an attorney, but not always. If I don't think it's a contentious item, it's my guess as to whether it's contentious. And you know, that gets expensive and then I also would have, if I think it's gonna be contentious hearing, I'd have a court stenographer present in case something happens to the audio and the video. Because if someone appeals to the Superior Court, what happens is they base their decision on the audio, the video and all the evidence that was put in. If they don't have the audio and video, then essentially at Superior Court, they get a brand new trial. And so we wouldn't want to redo the board hearing. And so that's why I have a stenographer and it costs money to print out the, it's up to the appellant to have the stenographer printed out and it's very expensive to do.
Okay, I don't want to dominate the conversation, but what if, and I think this would be mostly planning and zoning, if they feel, what recourse do they have if they feel they're not getting enough info in these meetings? I think before I came on council, we had a P and Z commissioner who had a magnetic sign made for his door and he used to roll up on sites and, and do his own investigation. What about something like that?
Actually, I had a discussion with that individual and he did it in Chicago so he could do it here. That was his attitude and I said, and it wasn't city money, it wasn't city vehicle, but he felt that he was able to use that authority to go onto people's property. I told him, you cannot be doing that and you will not be covered under our city policy if something happens. And so he, he then stopped using that mag, magnets like people do on, like realtors put on their cars. It was the same kind of thing. Said, it said council member, I'm sorry, P and Z commissioner and then his name. It was a nice sign.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. From my own research on this, planning and zoning commissioners, didn't the city pay for them to go to a, like a conference learning? And did the individual in question attend that meeting?
If you're referring to a recent League of Cities and Towns training, we did pay for, I think, three, if I've got that correct, Larry. Could you help, and then two attended?
It was the American Planning Association. They had a day-long workshop specifically for P and Z members and Board of Adjustment. My understanding is we paid for five and only four attended, according to one of the four that were there. They did not see the fifth commissioner. It was a $65 for the whole thing, but it was basically covered everything you're talking about in terms of the roles, duties, ethics, open meetings, all that. So it's put on periodically, not every single year, but it happened last Tuesday, I believe it was. So we did, we did pay for, for five.
It's every year in December.
It's a great.
Well, this is the American Planning Association. I don't remember them doing it, maybe they did last year, but I don't remember.
A lot of planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great training. It's, it's an expanded version of essentially what I put out to them in my documents that I, you know, you get the same documents that I get, that I give them. But it's six or seven hours and it's, it's a very good training, I've been to it.
Yep.
Could we make that part of a requirement once somebody is appointed to say that they have to complete that training sometime before they serve? Is that, is that possible?
I think that would be a good requirement, yes, I think you should.
But with our appointee schedule, that training is in December and we appoint in October. Therefore, they would already have taken their seat.
But you could just make it one of the requirements that they attend when it's available.
That year.
When it's available.
When it's offered, yeah. So has either one of these, because the lawsuit that we're currently involved in, in the ongoing process is probably one of the most significant, long-drawn-out, complicated lawsuits against the city. Has either one of these individuals come to you and say, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm saying, is this okay? To question, is it okay to go to court with this individual? Is it okay to, let's face it, Facebook is our third local newspaper these days. No matter how many news sites are trying to get up, both of these individuals are all over it. Are you representing the city or are you representing the applicant? But to say that you're there, that you've done this, has, has either one of them talked to you about, would there be any implications on, could they be disposed as the lawsuit goes on?
I, the names of the individuals has not been made yet in this meeting. I have an idea who you're talking about, but no, no one has come to me to talk about that lawsuit specifically. No, no commissioner or board member or their activities with the litigants.
Associated with them.
Correct.
So is it possible, probable, maybe? Can the council ask these two individuals to disqualify themselves from any votes with, concerning that particular business? And if they don't recuse themselves, because I think that's what has to happen, is that correct?
If, if there is a conflict or even an appearance of impropriety, in my opinion, then should, the individual should recuse themselves and have that common sense in doing that.
But Joel, don't you advise people of that? Anytime that, there have been times when I've seen you advise without the individual asking. First of all, I have no idea who we're talking about, so it makes it kind of awkward. I don't know if it's, we have legal ramifications and naming the individuals we're talking about, so I'm a little bit befuddled here. But anyhow, I have heard you make suggestions to people if there's a conflict. And so that's kind of what the boards, commissions and council rely on is having legal step up. If we're not aware of something, to step in and say, timeout. Has that not happened?
In the, in my 21 years plus here, I have had commission members and board members come to me saying, hey, I have a situation. I see the item on the agenda. I feel, do I have a conflict? And yes, and it's the same with council. I get the information, I'll type up a memo on it, I'll make a legal decision whether there's a conflict. And then if, if there is a conflict, I'll do the memo and then, or if there's not a conflict, actually. If there's not, I would just tell them there's not a conflict. And if they rely on my memo that says you don't have a conflict, then essentially they can vote on it. Now, as for, I'm looking at the agenda items, it says discussion on ethical behaviors of board and commission members. I'd say that's a pretty open range and you can talk about anybody you want by name if you want. You can do that tonight. No action can be taken tonight, but you can direct the city manager to put something else on another agenda. Like you were talking about, if you want a recusal of them for certain items, you can bring them forward in a public hearing and actually ask them to do that. And if they refuse to do it, then, and there's four of you or more that say, you know what, that sounds like cause to remove, you can do that.
And so part of what my question is, is something happening that you're aware of or that you're seeing that maybe some of us up here aren't aware of? That would be a conflict on, with board members? Are you, are you, because I can't imagine you being aware or seeing a legitimate conflict with a board member or council member not speaking out because that's what you do. You tell us. And so are you seeing something with, you, I'm assuming you know who we're talking about. Are you seeing conflicts that need to be brought out with individuals on certain boards?
Well, at the Tuesday council meeting, I'm sorry, P and Z night, there was allegations that Braden Biggs was talking to the attorney for the litigant. So that is the total violation. So I contacted Mr. Biggs and he said he did not even know that there was a Board of Adjustment meeting scheduled for the, for January 28th. So he did not know and he didn't even know that the person he was talking to, this is what he told me, that he didn't know that that was the litigant's attorney. So that's what he told me. But I did, I did talk to Mr. Biggs, yes.
Yes.
I purposely didn't bring up names, just instances? Because it goes across all boards and commissions. Planning and zoning happens to be the highest profile board or commission other than the city council. So the idea was for general discussion, that's why I didn't bring up any names. General discussion with ethics on all of our boards and commissions. P and Z being the highest profile, that's, and it's videotaped, it's out there for people to see, it's, you know, it's a common practice. That's why I didn't bring up any names. So, you know, I mean, I'd be glad to, glad to if you want me to, but I didn't so that we could have a general discussion about ethics and professionalism.
Brian, I was gonna ask, you know how Kathy would summarize notes of the last council meeting when we were all on paper? And we'd sometimes be able to read the previous council meeting. We have, what, 30 or 40 board members that meet? I mean, the ones that never meet, I mean, we have like the big four or five. There's no guarantee that they're going to view this meeting. Would, could I impose on someone in city clerk's staff to do the notes from this meeting and get it to all of the boards that regularly meet so that they know that we are aware of this and discussing it?
We certainly could do that and we can certainly send the link for everybody to watch it and hear it. I think notes are fine.
Or send the link.
Yeah, the link, you can hear your voice, you can hear the, the frame in which you're trying to impress upon people the importance of ethics and, and that kind, you know, that kind of thing. So we can definitely send that over, Matt, I don't know if there's any.
I think it would be better coming from the city manager and the city attorney.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we could, we could do that very simply, yes.
And I would think P and Z, Board of Adjustment, Parks and Rec, Library are probably the ones that do meet regularly.
It's simple, we can send it to all of them.
Yes.
Well, one thing with this training that's offered, what, what would we have to do to make it a requirement that they attend within the, I'll say, the first year they're sitting on the board?
Well, you could do several things. You could change the code, which I don't know if you want to do that, but that's one way to do it. Or when you do the motions to appoint, you can add that on as, as a condition.
Okay. Because I, I think that's a terrific idea, any idea that they attend some of these, the training sessions.
Joel, one of the things you always said to me, a conflict of interest includes money or a monetary gain.
It's proprietary or ownership, correct?
Okay, so receiving a campaign fund, does that fall into that same category?
Giving, you mean giving a campaign money to an individual?
And then someone, and then they have to vote on something for that individual?
Oh, I think that if it's not, it may not be a direct conflict of interest, but it sure does look odd. And I think that would look a little strange. I mean, people have a right to give money to a candidate, absolutely. I mean, if, if the candidate is involved with certain litigation against the city, I mean, it starts to look a little different. But is that a direct conflict? Probably not, but it might be an appearance of impropriety. So, and I don't know how a judge would see that. There'd have to be more, more information on it if it got to a courtroom.
Anyone else?
You know, I, I would like to reiterate that on, on the U-Haul thing, I don't believe. You know, I, I would like to reiterate that on, on the U-Haul thing, I don't believe Kristin and her husband had a financial, any financial gain or loss or anything else than that. But the fact that she felt it didn't look right and recused herself, I think is admirable. And that's what we, that's the kind of stuff that we need to stress and move across all boards and commissions. It's the old saying, it just don't look right. And, and even U-Haul said they didn't mind that she was here, but she stayed out of the hearing. And I, 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 that's the kind of behavior and activity we need to see. A question I have is on Facebook, if, say, on any board and commission, a number of participants in that board or commission like a page or comment on a page and it exceeds the quorum, is that an open meeting law violation?
I would say, if they're starting to comment on things involving the case, then it could be. And I think the attorney general would look at it that way, and I think a judge would too. If they're starting to talk about a case that is going to be before them, and it's going to be an issue that they decide, I would say yes, because that's definitely, they're talking, and there's four of them, and they're all looking at it. Even though they, they, they may not be at work, they're, they're at home, however, they're starting to talk about a case, absolutely.
This is just, I think this is probably going to be decided in the next few years on a higher scale. I mean, that would kind of almost be like, everybody watching the news, we're all watching Channel 15 tonight at 10 because the city's going to be mentioned, kind of almost the same thing. This is a new, it is a news source, so I would like to see a, a, a ruling on that in the next few, in the next year.
But the news thing, we're not going to have interaction.
We're not going to be talking about it.
No. Facebook, any social media, you have interaction.
So you're saying that if, if there's active communication on there, then, then yeah, then I could see that. And that's why I've deliberately only friended two people up here. I have only two friends up here on Facebook. Because if I friend a third, if I, if I friend a third, then I know that I'm violating a rule.
I believe there, there was a ruling or a change in the statutes, even as recently as this last session, to really enforce social media, using social media to transact business that should be done in this kind of forum. I, I think it's already there.
And, and there could be a public record request for those individuals' emails.
I recall something happening in Buckeye on Facebook that, uh, made some statewide news about council people.
Well, but there could be a, a public record request, even if they do it from their own personal device. If it involves city business, even if it's a, a council member, a board or commission member, those will be subject to the, um, open meeting law, I'm sorry, the Public Records Act. So, and if they don't give them up, then that is a problem. Then the city has a problem. Then the city gets sued because it didn't, uh, basically instruct them to, to give them up. Even though we would instruct them, but it, it, it gets very dicey.
Yeah, when I went to the train, the League of Cities training in, um, it was 2016, I guess it was, right? That, I was there for about two days, and I think the ethics section probably lasted two to three hours. And they talked a lot about this Facebook issue, about even, you know, just interacting. You, you can't stop anybody from looking at it, but if you start commenting, you don't know how many other members of your board or commission or, or council are on there. And, and, um, they really reiterated that, you know, you're opening yourself up. As the council member or commission member or board member, you're opening yourself up, because once, if they, if they question you, just like what you said there, Joel, you open your, all of your personal devices, your personal computers, everything open up to it. And, um, it's, it's just one of those things that they really reiterated, just to not even be involved in it at all. And so I, and, you know, along with, um, council member, uh, Wilson, sorry about that.
You.
I think it would be a great idea to, um, put it in the motion to say, you know, this, you will attend it the next time it's available. And if, if, I don't know if that's something that, you know, we're all busy, so I don't, you know, they meet once a year, but if they could get a video of it, so at least we could document that they watch it, you know? Um, that type of stuff would be a good thing.
Can you hold on a second?
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're saying every new commissioner and, and board member, we'd have to check with the company that puts it on. There might be a limit on how many can come from a particular agency. And there is a cost to it also, don't forget that.
Right.
But, but, and we can look into that, we'll find out if that is the case.
So then if, so then if the, if it's, um, if it's difficult to make that happen, is it possible that we can do something here with maybe the city manager and city attorney? That we can have.
We certainly could, but I don't think it's, don't let the cost of $65 for our, our ability to get trained in that capacity. And if it is part of the motion and there ever is an issue, we can certainly either get a YouTube video or get some kind of training for all of our boards and commissions if they want.
Well, Joel, there's more than Arizona cities in town. I mean, this is nationwide, maybe some of your staff can research and see if there's some kind of a, a discount there that we can hand out.
There is, and also, I do the training for those three main items. And I think, Mayor, you've asked that Robert's rules also be included in training in the future. I think you said, six months ago, you told me I'd like that in the next year.
Yeah.
And I, I already started that. And once again, I meet with Rudy and his staff, and we go over it with the new members. And I sit there with them when they talk about the P and Z stuff, as well as, uh, the board of adjustment. So we do have a training in addition to the formal training that they would get, if they wanted, if they wanted the formal training.
It's an orientation with the, the, the development director and you. I can't remember city manager, but for sure, I remember being appointed, and there was a pretty lengthy orientation. Make sure that we had questions answered and we understood, um, what the position entailed. And so there is some.
We do that now.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
I just want to be specific for a minute. Um, a few months ago, before this last election, on the third newspaper, I was accused of being unethical, that I should have recused myself from voting on anything on the hitching post because I owned land in the area. But I had gone to you first and asked if I had a conflict. I had that all clarified. And the fact, to be specific, that these two individuals have not come to you and asked any questions, I'm really uncomfortable with them voting on anything to do with the hitching post. And that's all I'm going to say about it.
Yes.
I, I, that being said, um, yes, you probably did get advice from Joel, but I'm just going to be honest, I've had a lot of people from the community say that they were concerned about that situation with you making votes. And so, I guess, I guess like it's an individual choice, like, you know, Dave had said that even though I didn't legally have to recuse myself, it looks weird, Gail, it looks bad.
And, and Joel said you didn't have to. I bought that land in '03, it's nothing new, I'm not doing anything with it. It has a large water feature that goes through it. However, you check it out first. You came to Joel and you checked it out before that meeting, and you decided to do that. So whether people on Facebook think it's unethical or looks bad, the fact that I legally checked it out first, if I, if I lived there, I could see a possibility. I don't live there, it's just vacant land I've owned since '03, so.
Well, so your property also was well beyond the 300-foot limit that we noticed for zoning. So there was no legal, there was really no legal conflict at all there.
And didn't have any legal advice about it. Those same people are voting on the same issue. And that's where I think we have a big problem right now. And, and, you know, I appreciate what you said, Dave, about you were trying to do this generally, but we also have a specific problem with one of the most complicated zoning issues in my six years on planning and zoning and my six years on council that I think we've dealt with. And it's ongoing there, where there doesn't look to be a resolution. So to have people sit on our boards and commissions, I don't know if you want to call it fraternizing or what, what you'd want to call it, but, you know, are they representing the city the best that they can?
I think there's a, a fine line in there. I do think there's not a problem with going on location. I've been a business advocate, and I do go whenever a restaurant is open, I try to go there. I've even taken videos and promoted a lot of our cities, so, so, yeah, it's just almost the intent. I mean, how often do you?
They don't have a lawsuit against us, though. That's where our problem is right now.
So it's individual bases and, bases, is that a word?
Basies.
Basies, and, uh, and what, you know, so.
Checking with the English.
So Joel, that's why you need to advise us on the direction that sometimes these things take, so.
And I think Joel hit it, though, I think, I think Dave and, and Joel both hit it. It may not be a legal conflict, but if it looks weird, I think the best thing to do is step, step aside. Just if it has the potential of looking like it's a conflict, I can't imagine why anybody wouldn't.
But we, as the council, if we see it and it's not happening, we have the ability and the option to, well, we, we can strongly ask them to do it, but if they choose not to, we can remove them from the boards and commissions, correct, Joel?
That is correct. It says with or without cause.
And so if that were to happen, obviously we have to go through the, you know, putting it on an agenda ahead of time and, um, and, and all that. I mean, it has to be on the agenda, um, of a council meeting.
Uh, if you're gonna, if you're gonna remove someone, it does need to have a meeting where, where there's a vote, yes.
Where there's a vote, so it happened on a Tuesday night?
Yes.
And?
Doesn't have to be open to the public for, for discuss, for, for, uh, public comments, but you can make it that way too, it's up to you.
Yeah, and it's done here.
Yes.
So.
It's in public.
Okay.
Okay, anything more on this?
Just, I have one quick question probably for Kathy. So when, we, um, we have a certain time of year that we do the reappointing, and that's, um, do they, do the, most of the commissions start in October, I can't remember, or they get appointed?
Most of, most of your terms end October 31st. You've got a, like, sewer board and all, you know, they're a little different, but most of them end October 31st.
And then they would start back up, the, 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 if they're reappointed, the ones that are reappointed, start when? The following?
Well, the, most of your terms are, are for three years, so they would be there for a three-year term. Yeah, they would start.
November 1st, right?
Yeah, November 1st. Current term would end, of, of somebody would end October 31st, and the new term would start November 1st.
And so we had, uh, talked about, these trainings are in December?
The one that I know of with the APA, because I, I went to it a couple of times also, um, used to be every December in the conference center up on the Black Canyon.
Yep.
Um, highway up on 17. But that one, I recall, was for Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment members, yeah.
And so it really wouldn't be a big gap if we were to require that prior to serving?
For those, those two boards and commissions, and, and there is a chance that maybe the league has a video? I, I mean, I don't know, I've not, I've not looked recently to see if they have something out there.
So it, it's, it's possible. It's not like there's a six-month gap from the time they're appointed to the time they would possibly take this training. Whether or not there would have to be a meeting, meetings aren't necessarily mandatory, but to make sure, it's possible to make sure that we require it, them to get this training and that they have that training before they actually serve. Then there's no, um, ability to say, I didn't know, or, you know, you've had your orientation, you've had the training. And so, you know, they would have the information that they need.
All right.
Your honor, that, that settles the issue for future P and Z members. It does not, however, address what was brought up tonight.
Yeah, and we're at the, you know, we don't know when the particular organizations are going to be meeting. You know, they could change their schedule to something other than a December, um, meeting date. It could, you know, just because of logistics and such. But if we could get in, get into either the League of Cities or those organizations that have a video or, um, whatever, that might be, you know, we appoint generally like the second or, yeah, right around the second meeting of October, or first and second meeting of October. And so some of those people might only have a 10-day period to get training before, well, they wouldn't meet until November anyway, so they have about a month, I guess. But, um, it's just a timing issue. I don't know if we want to say not serve on the commission, but have, have, uh, have the, have training as soon as, um.
Let's, let's leave this tonight with direction to, is this going to be Bryant's staff or Joel's staff?
Well, the first part is the email link, we can send that out, we'll get that going, that's.
And then.
To what, you mean these, for, for them to watch this?
Correct.
Not, not handwritten notes.
If your two branches could work together to get that, that would be great.
We do work together very well, yes. But there's another issue, because on, there's a critical meeting coming up on January 28th at the Board of Adjustment, involving the litig, one of the litigants. And Mr. Biggs sits on that commission, so I don't know if you want to address that. And then the next one would be March 12th, and that's a P and Z meeting regarding a conditional use permit revocation, and Mr. Kreidler sits on that board. So if you want to discuss that, I think that's where Ms. Barker was going.
Yeah.
Then if you want to have a meeting, bring them to the meeting, let them talk about the allegations, you can do that. And then you can decide what to do with them, and ask them if you still want, after they get a chance to speak, uh, you can ask them to recuse themselves from those items. And if they don't want to, then, then that would be the next item to deal with. I don't know if you want to do that, but that is an option for you to do.
In a similar vein, have we looked into future council member Schroder is not going to have any conflicts on anything that he's looked at it on P and Z, correct?
Uh, no, he would, because he voted on the CUP involving, uh, the hitching post. So he will not be able to, uh, to discuss, I have discussed the issue with him. I don't know how he feels about it, but I have discussed the issue with him.
Yeah, all of us who came off of P and Z had those problems at the get-go, when there were issues on P and Z that also came to council.
Yeah, and Joel definitely brought it up.
Yes, he did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your honor, final comment if I may, is, I, I, I hope, I hope this idea of transparency goes all the way through, not only all the boards and commissions, but outside the meeting room as well. That, there, there not be these, you know, these conversations with people who, where, where it seems to be inappropriate, that the comments are made out there on Facebook, because somewhere, somebody's going to bring that back to the city or to the council, and it's going to be a problem. And I think everybody needs to examine how they interact with whatever group they belong to and, and make the right decision, and do what's appropriate, do what's professional, and do what's ethical. And, and so I, I hope with nothing else out of this discussion, that's what comes through, is we, boards and commissions are, while they're not professionals in their, in their field necessarily, they are, they are boards and commissions that people look at, they watch. P and Z has looked at whoever's going to present, developer, whoever, to see the best way to present. So this stuff is out there to the public, and, and the public wants transparency, and the public wants to see that stuff is done open, openly, and honestly. And I think that's the least they expect, and, and we need to deliver. I think that one's true.
Yeah.
Pardon? I'm through.
Okay, well, I think this is all we can do tonight on this, so. I'm going to move on to the next item. Actually, since we have a guest presenter, we're going to put item number three, 18539, in front of 18538, so that the guests can get back home. So, Presentation and Discussion of the Development of Fee Study Update Including Land Use Assumptions. Larry.
Your honor, uh, Council Larry Kirch, Development Services Director. You recall back a few months ago, we did, uh, go through an RFP process. We. We picked Tischler-Byce. That contract was awarded through the council here. Every five years, the city is required to update its development fees, the infrastructure improvement plan, and the land use assumptions. So, keeping it short, I'm going to introduce Carson Byce. He's the principal and the consultant. He did this work for the city before in 2014. You may be familiar with Carson, and I'm sure he has a very informative and brief presentation for you to.
I was going to say, it was only going to take three hours. Well, I'm Carson Byce. It's good to, to stand in front of you again. And the good news is none of you have to recuse yourself from this presentation at all. How many folks were here in 2014 when we did the last study? Okay, so we've got a few new faces here. So what I thought I'd do is just sort of introduce development fees in general, talk about the, the Arizona-specific process, and talk about how we're going to move forward, and then open it up to any questions you have, and I will keep it brief. A little bit about us, we've been in business now for 40 years. We focus on two things, really. One is impact fees and infrastructure financing issues, and the other is fiscal and economic analysis. We've done more of this type of work than any firm in the country. As you can see here, we've, we've got quite a bit of consulting experience under the new act, and, and the clients you see here are just for the new act, and there's many more under the old statute. In 2012, the, the state legislature did change the Development Fee Act in Arizona, and, and some of the changes are highlighted on this slide. First, it requires three integrated products now. The first is what we call the land use assumptions, and it has to cover a period of at least 10 years, and it has to be approved by the elected officials. We also have to prepare what we call an infrastructure improvement plan, also known as an IIP. That's limited to 10 years in time, 15 for utilities, and then the development fee study. And then one of the, I think, one of the positive aspects of this new legislation is it does sort of force jurisdictions to put development fees in, in context with a broader infrastructure funding strategy, and I think that's one of the reasons why the act was, was overhauled, was maybe some abuse by some jurisdictions who were viewing impact fees as their only capital revenue source. And, and this was made, or a lot of these changes were meant to crack down on that. Also requires that all the fees be based on the same level of service provided to existing development. That's not unique to Arizona. That's sort of a national requirement as well. But it does place some limitations on what jurisdictions in Arizona are allowed to charge development fees for now. For instance, there's been a reduction in, in the size of recreational facility, the size of parks. You can't use impact fees for public safety-related training spaces. They've outlawed the use of fees for general government facilities unless there was existing debt prior to a certain date in 2012. And so it's placed some limitations on it that we're having to, or all the jurisdictions are having to, to deal with. And also, it has specific provisions set out for refunds if improvements are not constructed within 10 years. In terms of sort of a background about impact fees in general, they are a one-time payment, and they're, they're designed to offset new growth's commensurate impact on infrastructure within the community. We can't use fees for operations, maintenance, or replacement of infrastructure. I think it's important that we note that it's not a tax, because a lot of times we hear the development community say, this is just a tax on new development. A tax and a fee are very different. A tax is purely for revenue raising, depending on the state. Sometimes it requires a vote of the people. And a fee has to basically be designed to cover the service being provided, much like your building permit fees, your site plan fees, et cetera. With impact fees, it's a little tighter. We have to basically solve for a three-legged legal stool. But one is, we have to show that there's a nexus or a need, meaning that development's going to continue in the community, that growth is going to generate the need for facilities. We have to show benefit. We show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of expenditures, meaning that, you know, we have to spend the money within 10 years, and then depending on the size of a community, we may have to show geographic benefit, but in Apache Junction at this point, we think a citywide service area is appropriate for, for all the fee categories. And then we have to show that they're proportionate, meaning that we just don't have a residential fee and a non-residential fee. We have to distinguish between single-family, multifamily, mobile home, retail, office, industrial, et cetera. As I mentioned, you know, we've gone over this. One of the things we need to think about with all fees are credits and offsets, okay? The idea here is we want to ensure that new development that comes into Apache Junction doesn't pay twice. Once through the development fee, and then again through a future stream of revenue, whether that be property tax, sales tax, user fees, et cetera. There's also a potential for double payment if there's existing debt on assets that we're including within the development fee calculation, so we have to, to do our due diligence there to make sure that, that those double payments don't happen. And then finally, I want to talk briefly about some myths and misconceptions that we see, and that is, one is that development fees can cover the entire cost of new facilities, negating the, the need for higher taxes, and that's simply not true. As we've mentioned earlier, you have to give offsets. A lot of times, particular facilities aren't 100% growth-related. For instance, it's very unusual to see a new fire station be 100% growth-related because there's a redundancy within a system of fire, because, you know, response times and backups and that type of thing. And another tenant, we should, or a myth, a misconception would be that, you know, we can just adopt, adopt fees based on, let's say, a park master plan level of service of, let's say, five acres per thousand, but the jurisdiction's only providing three acres per thousand. You can't, can't correct these existing deficiencies with impact fees. There's also a misconception, particularly by smaller communities, that we can just waive non-residential fees for, for economic development reasons, meaning that you can, you know, not charge retail because we rely heavily on retail sales tax. Well, that violates equal protection with impact fees, and so we have to treat all land uses equally. And another myth, misconception we see is that all developers and builders hate impact fees. That's simply not true. I would argue that the smart ones like impact fees, because they guarantee that a jurisdiction is going to have the infrastructure available that allows them to continue to do business and market a viable product within the community. And finally, impact fees affect low and, and moderate income housing. That doesn't have to be the case. There's several ways that we can adjust for this. One is you can grant credits for affordable housing. Now, obviously, you have to define what affordable or workforce housing is. The caveat here is that you would have to make up the difference. So if, if affordable housing project generated $100,000 in impact fees and the city decided to waive those fees, you would have to make up that $100,000 from another revenue source. Other ways we can mitigate the fees is to do the, the fees by size of house. That may be something you may want to consider later, later on. And, you know, who pays the fee, it depends on the economic cycle we're in at the time. If we're in a robust economy, most of the time, frankly, the fee is 100% passed on to the homeowner, and it's sometimes marked up because of carrying costs. When we're not in a robust economy, everybody shares in the burden. The landowner sells the land for less of a purchase price. The developer takes a hit on his profit. The home buyer takes a hit on, for a portion of the fee as well. In terms of the fees that we're looking at, it's parks and recreation, library, police, and transportation. And two other slides here. One is we are complete, we're on a fast track with this project, by the way, to keep you guys in good graces with, with the act. We prepared the land use assumptions, and this summarizes what we're, what we're seeing. By 2030, we're projecting another 7,400 persons. Housing unit increase by 2030 is about 2,790, single-family units, 491. Multifamily units, you would increase by about 4,500 jobs, and that equates to about 1.9 million square feet. And I mentioned process and fast track. These are the next steps. We're going to continue working on the IIP. The targeted completion date for that is January 18th. We would continue meeting with the development community. We have our first meeting tomorrow. I would assume we'd have another meeting in, in January or early February. At some point, we'd be coming back to you guys to talk about the, the IIP and start the, the public process ball rolling. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
What, what are those assumptions based on?
Good question. So whenever we approach doing the land use assumptions, we look at a variety of different factors. One, we look at, is there an official projection that, that the jurisdiction is prepared that's part of their comp plan and that everybody sort of swears by? That's not the case. You look at regional sources. In this case, you've got MAG here, the American Copa Area, or Association of Governments. They publish projections that a lot of the communities buy into because they provide data to, for, for MAG to actually make those projections. When we look, when we use MAG, which is what these projections are based on, we also look back at, well, what's happened for the last 10 years. Now, then you've got to throw out what happened with the recession. And so we have to say, does the MAG projection seem logical, given what we know about the community today? And then you make your best guess, okay? I will tell you that some communities we've worked with have taken issue with the MAG projections and said, we think their 2030 number is too aggressive. We really think that's our 2035 number. And conversely, we've had jurisdictions say, we think the 2035 number is going to be our 2030 number. So it's really a, it's a give and take with, with what we know, what staff knows, what MAG's projecting, and what's the best way to, to make the projections going forward that makes everybody feel comfortable.
Your Honor, in your single-family units, what all is included in that? Is that site-built homes and mobile homes?
No, mobile home would be its own category, and that's, that's a great question. And, and before I answer that, I want to address one other thing for, for you. It's important to note for everybody here that the way we're trying to do most of these fees, the projection of jobs and population and housing units doesn't really influence the fee amount, okay? That's really used to project revenue, project credit. So it's not like if we get the development fees really, really wrong, or the projections really wrong because there's some recession that happens four years from now, that doesn't mean the fees were double what they should have been, okay? So it really doesn't drive the fee amount. And to answer your question, what we do is we, we look at the American Community Survey data published by the Census Bureau, and we look at the persons per housing unit and the persons per household for the different types of units. Because you have a large number of mobile homes and recreational vehicles, we decided to separate that out as a separate category, because it does have a different persons per household factor. It's smaller than what we see in a lot of jurisdictions, because a lot of times, like, like in Florida where we work, or North Carolina or South Carolina, where single-family, or mobile homes sometimes have entire families in them. They behave more like a single-family unit, and so they're included in that. But if you look at your persons per household factor here, it's less than the single family, and so we've separated it out as its own category.
So you're not doing it by size?
Yep.
And I disagree with that totally, because a two-bedroom, one-bath, site-built home has the same impact as a two-bedroom, one-bath mobile home. They shouldn't be separate. They shouldn't be any different from each other. They're still a residential housing unit.
Well, I can't debate you on that, because I haven't seen the data by size, but I can prepare the, the single-family numbers by number of bedrooms and see what that pans out at compared to a mobile home unit. But typically, when you have a lot of mobile homes and a lot of retirees, they tend to have a very small household size compared to a single-family unit.
And I agree with that. However, we have a lot of horse properties that have very large mobile homes on them. So to count them out just by mobile home versus site-built, to me, is inadequate.
Well, I can't.
Because there's a lot that are just as big.
Well, I can't in good conscience recommend that you include mobile homes as, in the single-family category, because there's such a difference in the household size.
Sometimes.
According, no, that's the average. The census data is the average of the community, recognizing there are going to be some that have more, some that have less.
So Carson, can you consider, or can we look at number of rooms across the board?
You could.
How about that analysis?
You could. I, but I don't, the PUMS data for the census, I don't believe has bedrooms for mobile homes, but I'll double-check. But you don't want to get into the bedroom game, because then you have to define bedroom, and then the home builders try to game the system on what's a bedroom. And so that's why 10 years ago, we were able to come up with a methodology that links the building permit data, the census data, and the assessors' data, so that you can do it by size of house. That's a lot of work, and I don't know if you want to do it in Arizona, because nobody is, everybody we work with around the country is doing that. Nobody in Arizona wants to touch it. We've done, like, you saw that list of impact fee clients. Not one jurisdiction has wanted to do it by size of house.
Well, and I understand there's more work involved.
Well, I'm not saying that we don't want to do the work. I'm just saying you're under a tight timeframe.
Well, and, and that's, I still want to do it right, and a two-bedroom is a two-bedroom. I don't care if it's a mobile or if it's a site-built.
But the question is, can we get the data from a mobile home by number of bedroom? That I don't know about. We can find that out.
Well, what's interesting, I'm sorry.
Your Honor?
Yes. I lost my thought.
What's interesting?
You'll find it.
I'll get it.
Your Honor, how do, tell me how the, this is probably a silly question, okay? But tell me how the number of single-family units impact, our impact fees are, because we don't know that we'll actually have that many units. We're saying we might, and therefore, we're basing our impact fees on, on that might. So how does the information that Councilmember Evans is asking for impact what you have here?
It would, it would affect the, the fee amounts. So if we were to do it by size of house, which we've done all over the country, and, and what you, what you find is that, and it'd be interesting to do this here because of the demographics. But in most communities, as the size of a single-family unit increases, so do the number of people, so do the number of vehicles available, which influences trip generation rates. But at a certain point, it levels off, and that leveling off point, in one community, maybe 3,500 square feet, another community, maybe 5,000 square feet. It just depends on, on the characteristics. But I'll tell you, in Florida, we found that at a lot of places, it's, it's not that way at all. And it all has to do with the demographics, particularly with retirees. Seasonal population influences things as well. So it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's an analysis that's, that's relatively easily done. It's just that it's, it's going to, there's good, two aspects involved. One is there's going to be a policy decision ultimately by you all of which direction you want to go. You're also going to want to shop this around to the home builders as well, to get their, their feedback on it. But it's something we can do, if that's the, the board's, you know.
I had another thought. I mean, it's the same thought, but I remembered it. So when I consider the number of actual homes that are single-family homes, stick-built versus actual mobile homes, the number percentage-wise now are vastly single-family homes. We just don't have any new mobile home parks. I mean, I know one that's zoned for that, Councilmember Evans, but the vast majority of the new home permits are all single-family home. I don't know if that factors into your public policy decision about where we go with this, but we're.
I don't see a lot of them coming in the future.
That's the, that's the one, of the, of the 2,700 units. Percentage-wise, very small in terms of how many will be mobile homes, and so, that's something to consider.
I have a quick question, and you aspect on it. A prefabbed home that's coming in onto a large lot, is that considered in, for, you know, in your case, a single-family?
Yes.
Site-built.
Yeah, and that's, and I was actually talking to Larry about this, because it's my understanding that there's not likely to be what I consider a mobile home. There's not likely to be a lot of those developed. It's more of these modulators or prefab, which would be a single-family dwelling.
So when Clayton Homes comes in and builds one of their houses on an acre and a quarter, that's a single-family. We charge the single-family rate, the mobile home rate. We haven't had a mobile home park approved in a long time, but if a mobile home park were to be approved, we would charge the mobile home rate that's on the fee schedule.
But, and we don't have the fee schedule yet.
I mean, the current fee schedule, we have multifamily, we have mobile home, and RV is in the same category, and manufactured home, like a Clayton home, we count that as a single family. We charge the higher rate. Does that clarify?
And this is a frequent issue. Would you talk about mobile homes? People are talking about two different things.
Well, and the site-built and the prefab, and now we have panelized construction, the site-built, and to have some semblance of, there's still a residence, and that's my point.
Right, and you're getting just.
And the impact is still the same.
Right, and the impact of what they bring and social equity on what those are.
And actually, the impact from some of these mobile home parks is heavier than the impact from the single-built residential areas, because our winter visitors drive a lot. They do a lot of driving and a lot of library visiting, et cetera.
Any more questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Did we answer your question adequately?
Sure. Sure.
I think we're on the same page. Prefab, the modulators, or single families, so, okay. Okay, thank you. We'll see you soon.
Brian, just administratively.
Yeah.
Because we're now on this iPad or whatever it's called. Can we, this, um, this was not on our system. Is that something we can have put on here now for future, so for future reference when?
The PowerPoint?
Definitely.
Can it be put on to our work session, agenda items?
We can still do that, right, Matt?
We can attach the PowerPoint as a PDF to the.
To this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What I have to verify is if it'll upload to this meeting.
No, I just.
But in future cases?
Or, or just after the fact. Since it wasn't on the original agenda item, I was just wondering if it can still be put on there after the fact.
Yeah, Jill does that all the time. You can add, upload.
And it shows up on their app?
I don't know if it shows up on your app. It shows up in Legistar, but I don't know if it shows up on your app.
Okay. So I'll check to see if it gets on the app. At minimum, we can just email it to you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to go back to item number two then, 18538, Presentation and Discussion on Amendments to City Code, Volume One, Chapter Four. Larry?
Okay, so, uh, tonight, and we're going to be talking about what we hope is forward-thinking. We haven't updated these fees in about 12 years on, on some of these. So, um, we're also going to bring that, this back in, uh, January as well. So, uh, tonight, we're going to talk about onsite versus off-site engineering fees. So onsite is what happens in a subdivision by a developer. Off-site are improvements adjacent, immediately adjacent to the development. So if you think of Mr. Kaufman's project up on Main Street, there's internal streets, that's onsite. What happens on Main Drive, that would be an off-site improvement. Uh, we're going to talk about, uh, some fees related to planning, zoning, and subdivision, and then, and building fees as well. So we did update some of our fees in the planning in Chapter Four, uh, Volume One, Chapter Four, for rezonings, plan developments, CUPs. We did do that. We also are recommending some changes to that, so we wanted to bring those back. Uh, engineering fees were created in 2006. Prior to that, the city did not have what we would call onsite engineering fees. The building, uh, permit fees, uh, have not been updated since the building code was updated in 2006. So some of these are about 12 years old. We were given direction to staff in January, and we had a work session, uh, a little over a year ago on this, so. The, what we're suggesting is updating some onsite fees. We're wanting to create some off-site fees for engineering that we currently don't have. So for development engineering, onsite or off-site, Sam Jardis is our Development Services Engineer. Here's, he's here tonight. Emile Schmidt, those two collaborated, worked together on the off-site and the onsite fees. We have some scenarios. We looked at Mesa, Gilbert, and Queen Creek, um, on what the fee we did charge Mr. Kaufman for Bellegave, and what we did charge MVS, just kind of as a comparison. What we charged, what we're proposing to charge, and what these nearby cities charged. So, right now, moving into off-site. Off-site engineering, essentially, let's use Fries as an example. When Fries came in, they did off-site improvements to Old West Highway and State Highway 88. Emile Schmidt's time was paid for, if you will, by HERF. So he, he puts on his time clock, or he does his finger with Kronos. That is paid for by HERF. So what I'm suggesting is for a different way for us to look at it is that development has, uh, its own project, its own impacts to Old West Highway and State Route 88. And it kind of skews who's paying for the service. So in one way of thinking about it is the developer should pay for the time it would take for Mr. Schmidt to look at the off-site impacts of that development, as opposed to the HERF fund. Uh, same thing with floodplains. So when we get a building permit, and I'll explain this in a minute. When we get a building permit, it's in the floodplain, we immediately ship it down to, uh, Public Works because Emile is the floodplain engineer. And essentially, HERF is paying for Emile's time to look at that. And I think we have a different way that we should probably be accounting for that. Um, it's not a lot of money, but I think it does skew who is paying for, uh, development, uh, engineering review for off-site and the floodplain thing. So we have a recommendation on how that would work. So for example, here's Mr. Kaufman's development. We did charge for essentially Development Services Engineering $2,300. So when we look at what Mesa would have charged for 103-lot subdivision for what they, I think, have onsite and off-site together, is you can see we're way below that. So we calculated all the, and I have a spreadsheet that's probably too small to see on the screen, but looking at these other cities, how they set up their fees, how they charged, and we're proposing to change that to recover more of, um, our costs, if you will, for the types of plans, engineering reports, uh, plan sheets that engineering has to, has to review. Development Services Engineering and, uh, Public Works Engineer, if you want to call it that. MVS tags and titles. So we charged $1,300. That was, that, both of these projects, by the way, had onsite and off-site improvements. So MVS tags and titles improved. I'm trying to think of that little east-west street just north. Gregory Street. So there is off-site improvements. They had to do half-street improvements. Mesa would have charged $8,500 for that development. Uh, we're proposing to kind of hit right in the middle there with what Gilbert and Queen Creek would have currently charged for that development using their, their way that they calculate that. So I will spare you going through the detailed spreadsheets of how we came up with all that. Uh, I'm suggesting that if a building permit is in the floodplain, then we would charge, uh, that's basically the 100-year, the 1%, that's the 100-year floodplain. If it's in there, if you're not in the floodplain, we now have converted the flood maps to our GIS system. So right on, when we look up a assessor's parcel number, we can tell you whether it's in or out of the floodplain. If it's in the floodplain, then we would have a $50 fee, administrative fee, for the floodplain. And then the engineering review that Emile would have to do. So Emile has to look at three different elevation certificates. Before the building's built, during construction, and when it's all done. So they have to certify because we have to, um, answer to both FEMA and the, um, the Arizona Department of Water Regulation, ADWR, that, Water Resources, that, uh, that project doesn't impact somebody upstream or downstream. In addition to that, um, there are parts of the city that we have floodplain that doesn't have an elevation associated with it. So it's called an unnumbered A-zone. In some areas of the floodplain, it's, um, uh, we have an AE-zone. The, the elevation, we know it. In other areas, we might have to have an engineer, the, the customer has to go get an engineer, determine what the elevation is. Emile has to review that report, agree or disagree, see if the person did the methodology or not. And then, so I'm saying, if the project is in the floodplain and we send the building permit down there, then this would recover public works costs for Emile's time to go out to the field, look at three elevation certificates, possibly help an engineer figure out what the base flood elevation is. We're also talking about what we would call a GIS or an addressing fee. So if you, uh, had a building addition, then we keep track of that now in GIS. So if you build a, uh, accessory building, a garage outside, um, I can tell you, I just did this. We're, we're, I'm suggesting $25. Where I did this in Scottsdale, where I live, $255. So I think we're, we're, I'm not saying that eventually we'll get there, but essentially, if you do a project that expands the footprint of your building, we record that in GIS. Obviously, the assessor does too. We also, if someone wants to, we don't charge anybody if they want to change their address. So we have folks all the time, they live on the corner of X Street and Y Street, and they want to put the pool, what we think is the front yard, because they want the pool, the view of the mountain. So now we have to change their street address. We change the street address, and then we have to notify, I think it's 22 or 26 agencies, 911, the assessor, et cetera, et cetera. I'm suggesting we charge $50 to keep track of it. With the new, uh, police dispatch system, um, our GIS function, uh, Joseph Kleiner, JC, he actually has to create an address in the two systems. So we're basically now have two databases we have to manage with address changes. In addition, we're trying to build more of a robust, um, so if you've gone on to the city map viewer, uh, hopefully you have heard or seen about the city map viewer. Those GIS layers, and now creating those various layers, I think there's six map viewers now. But we want to have, uh, when you do GIS, there's a database and a map. So you want those two things to work together. So if we do a rezoning or conditional use permit, or an administrative use permit, we ought to be able to go on a parcel, click on the parcel, and see, oh yeah, there was a CUP on this property in, um, 1995. Or they have an administrative use permit, it's good for eight months, so they can live in their fifth wheel. Well, how come there's a fifth wheel over on the corner of such-and-such? So we can click on the map and say, they can live in their fifth wheel for eight months while they build their house. It'd be nice to have that, um, on the GIS. So we're talking about a $25 fee. Subdivision plat's the same thing. New subdivision comes in, 104 lots, we have to issue an address to 104 lots. Um, other nearby cities, Queen Creek charges $5 a lot. So the number will run up, obviously, if there's 250 lots or 100 lots. The other thing too, again, in the GIS system, when someone creates a lot, splits a lot, combines a lot, moves a lot line, we have to update that in our GIS system. We don't, we don't charge a fee for any of that. So I just mentioned lot combos, lot line adjustments. The last time we updated the fees in 2016, we created the minor land division at 250. We did not do that for lot line adjustments, moving a lot line, or the lot comboing. So we want to have that fee the same as a minor land division. Also, we have, if you want to call it the unfunded federal mandate, and that is, uh, all cities are supposed to have a municipal, um, stormwater, uh, MS4 permit, which we do have, basically an erosion control permit. So Sam, again, Development Services Engineer, if it's on one of those acre-and-a-quarter lots, we want to look at making sure if it's over an acre, they're supposed to be doing stormwater pollution prevention. If it's a subdivision, and this seems like a lot of money, but Sam, uh, over an eight-month period, while a developer's out there, uh, grading and, um, setting up the infrastructure, Sam can go out to a development site one time a week for eight months while they're building a subdivision and putting in all the infrastructure. And if it rains and the streets are all muddy, then we're going to hear, uh, hear about it from ADEQ. So we don't charge a fee, and he can go out to a site, you know, 20, 30 times over the course while you're building a subdivision. We don't recover those, if you will. Uh, we understand the county recording fee is going up, um, I want to say July 1st. And so, um, we want to be able to basically charge the same, and it's basically a pass-through. But we want to be able to charge what the county charges. Uh, we have a fee that we do, there is one fee we do want to eliminate, if there's anything here, is that, uh, no one is really getting these, this was set up years ago in the sign code. We should have taken this out in 2016 when we did it, but we don't issue these weekend for Realtors or anybody else. So, um, the, uh, sign permit fees, we don't charge sign permit fees. And there's a little bit of variation in there. If you, um, know that Ross came in and got a conditional use permit, they more than doubled what our sign code allows, on the big Ross, the big blue sign. So miraculously though, that sign only costs the value of it, so the, the permit fee is based on the value. A sign that's twice as big as Dollar Tree next door, or Goodwill, I think it was, their, their sign costs $10,000. The twice-as-big sign costs $6,500. So we're saying there's somehow using valuation tables where they tell you the value. How could one sign that's twice as big be, um, not quite half, but... So a lot of these are based on, when you create a system where you're using, relying on what the applicant tells you the value of the house, and you have these tier schedule, all, and so the tier changes at 100,000, every house comes in at 99,000. So we're trying to create a system, even for signs, um, where we do the zoning review. This is just for zoning review. There's still our minimal permit reviews for the electrical permit that would come with the sign. So we're suggesting that we, uh, most cities have a comprehensive sign package. So when Fries comes in, um, we review seven monument signs, and then a whole bunch of signs that are on the building. So I think that we're getting close here. The other thing, I want to show you this table here too, is, um, what I talked about last time. If you want to come in and talk to us anytime you're thinking about a project, we're not going to charge you. Once you submit an application, we currently don't charge. And then, uh, that would be like a, what we would call a pre-app meeting. But a pre, pre-app, we still aren't going to charge anybody. So go into the next table, which is hard to see, if you're in the back of the room maybe, but there are a few ci, uh, cities that don't charge a pre-application fee, but appear to make it up on the back end. So if you're Oro Valley, no charge upfront, but it's $3,500. We really don't have a fee for either of these, where you come in. Once you come in with a concept plan, uh, we're not, where we're really trying to get you through the process. It does seem that for 250, it's a minimal investment when you're doing a project that, you know, might be a multimillion-dollar project. And then, I think we're in the ballpark, I'm suggesting 1250, which is about the same as what Morana's charging, um, for when you come in with the site plan. So we don't have a fee for that. So now we're going to get into residential. I don't know if you want to ask me any questions in the meantime. You're floored, you're flabbergasted, you're something here. So Dave is now going to talk. We haven't updated these fees since 2012, or 2006. So Dave's going to walk through single-family residential, uh, manufactured homes, manufactured homes, not mobile homes, and then, uh, commercial with kind of the same, uh, philosophy that we're trying to simplify some of these fees and not, and get away from compu, complicated ways of calculating the fees. So Dave's going to take it over.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, so the idea that we're really trying to push is simplification. So hopefully, you'll get to see some of what's complicated and where we're headed. For a new residential, one- and two-family permit fee, um, we would, what we're proposing is that the total square feet under the roof, so porches, garage, the house, that we multiply that square footage by a dollar 20. And that would be the building permit fee inclusive of the plan review fee. Right now, we calculate a building fee, we take a percentage of that, and then that becomes a plan review fee. We add them back together and then charge the, the person. And we get asked constantly at the counter, what's it going to cost me to do this whatever project? We can't answer that question. We can throw out really big ballpark things, but because it's so complicated and what we have to look at, it's not something we can easily do. So how does that compare the dollar 20? There's a couple of ways to compare. One is the methodology. The second will be, and I'll show you how it compares to what we're charging now. So based on a 2,000-square-foot home with a 400-square-foot garage and a 200-square-foot porch, the current method would be that we would multiply the living area by 7, 70, 80, which is our current valuation for livable area. We'd multiply the garage by 2430, and that's kind of our non-livable area. And then the porch is, uh, figured on 1660. So it gives you a valuation of 154, 640. So we take that, we have this tier thing that says if you're between 100,000 and 500,000, you're going to pay a base amount of X, and then for every thousand above that, you're going to come up with another bit of money, right? So that's our magic tier system. And you would get a building permit cost of 1,629 for that 2,000-square-foot home. You multiply that number by 65%, now you have the plan review cost. So the total at this time for, if we did this house today with our fee schedule is 2,688.65. So, one thing to keep in mind is that 2,685, or 88, is in 2,006 dollars because that's, the valuations are from 2,006. If you look at the amount of inflation, so there's different, I think I talked about this last time, you know, different websites you can go to that tell you inflation, and, you know, your blue jeans cost this. Back when you graduated high school, you can figure out what that all... So in the 12 years, basically, there's been a 25% increase in the cost. So if you put $100 into this thing, it says it should be 125 now. So if we take the $2,006 and multiply it by the 25%, we get 3,361.32. So that would be, if, if all we did was raise our valuation level up to match what it should be now, that would be the fee that we'd be getting. Under the new and improved method for calculating a new residential home permit that we're proposing, we would take the total square footage, which would be 2,600. We'd multiply that by a dollar 20, and that would be our fee. 3120, we're done. So that makes it simpler for the, the developer, the builder. They can get it, it's done. And in most cases, they're less worried about the cost than just getting through the process and knowing, you know, where to send the, the check and stuff. So... So that, so you compare that to where we would be with the inflated rate, so we're actually not even coming up to that point that we would be if we just raised everything twenty-five percent. So how does that stack up with our neighbors in other valley areas? So currently, you can see we'd be at twenty-six eighty-eight. Queen Creek, right now, their va, I threw the valuations in, just all the others, Queen Creek, Casa Grande, Mesa, all do their fees based on valuation, okay? And then they have a tier thing that they put them in. So Queen Creek, the valuation would be two sixty-five. The other thing to say is Queen Creek, all those adopt the most current valuation table, and we're going to get into talking about that in just a minute, but, so those are two thousand eighteen valuation numbers. So Queen Creek would be two sixty-five, their permit fee would be thirty-six hundred, Casa Grande would be three oh seven with their valuation, and their permit fee would be forty-two hundred. Mesa, their valuation would be two seventy-two, their permit fee would be about thirty-six hundred, and then what we're proposing, the valuation, if we use the twenty-eight valuation, it would be three hundred and seven, matches up with Casa Grande, because we'd be using the same table, and the permit fee that we'd be looking for is thirty-one-twenty. So the fee based on new valuation and our current tier, so if we just changed the valuation to what the table says is appropriate for now, and we ran it through that magic tier thing that we have, we'd be at forty-four fifty-nine. So we would be the highest in, you know, the area, so.
Excuse me, Dave, could, could you explain again why you used a different valuation amount? I mean, it seems to me we're comparing apples to oranges here. Did I miss something? When you're, when you're showing these permit fees, wouldn't you want to show them for each city with the same valuation for, for lestrous persons?
No, no, because, because that's kind of the problem, okay? So depending on what valuation and what you're actually measuring that from, you get different numbers, and they don't always equate. But, so these valuations that they use to get, th, these are all based on a two thousand square foot house with a four hundred square foot garage and a two hundred, so the methodology that each one of them uses to come up with their valuation that then determines their fee is why the fees are different, or why the valuations are different.
So what you're saying is, is that those are the valuations of the same size of houses?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're, and they're, they're basing their permit fees on the valuation, and you're saying that we're basing our permit fee on the one dollar and twenty cents per square foot.
Right. So one of, one of the things, I don't want to, kind of like Larry, there's a whole bunch of confusing tables I can show you, but I actually took our, took a bunch of our houses, the, the fees that we actually collected, and did it, and that's how I kind of came up with this dollar twenty. I just, I ran a whole bunch of them through different scenarios, and that came up to be the kind of the equivalent factor through those. And so, right now, we, we make up a number for the value, or we take it from somebody who's making up the number, we multiply that by our square footage, and then we run it through this thing that somebody came up with that said, this is kind of the money we want to get based on this thing. What I'm trying to move us away from is that kind of convoluted thing. Now, that's the way everybody else in the valley does it. There's, the only other place that does a flat fee is Fountain Hills, and theirs is like seventy-five cents. But then they also do forty-five cents for the porch stuff. So I just, you know, we're out there, when the inspector's out there, it's not a whole lot different to look at the, the structure for the porch and the framing on the inside of the house. He's there, he's, it's, it's a cost. So that's kind of the logic behind just saying, it's a dollar twenty, that covers our inspection, our plan review time, and, you know, the overhead we have for the city, and so we think that's a better way to go. It's, square footage is, is objective. Right now, everything's kind of subjective. So we want to make it, we have a square footage, we have a number, we've got a rate. So, and then we try to make sure that that fit, you know, it could be a dollar thirty, dollar fifty, but we wanted to make sure that we fit kind of in where we want to is in relation to other neighbors, what our costs are, and what historically we've been getting. So, does that help?
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, I understand Casa Grande economy is different from ours, but with the same evaluations and we're eleven hundred dollars less, not that I'm saying we want to be the highest, but eleven hundred dollars less than the same valuation base is based on? Is it based on our economy, on our average income, what exactly would that be based on?
So part, and, and that is part of the disconnect in valuation. The, the valuation is, so I think it's Chandler uses a valuation table that's twenty, that's even older than where we're at, you know? So what happens is they just kind of, they make all this stuff fit and then spit out a number, right? So we just kind of want to get to that number, thirty-one-twenty for the number of inspections and all the cost, that's kind of what, that would work. That would support our department having a plan review or an inspector, the vehicles and all that. So we've analyzed that based on kind of the number of permits we're doing in that category, and so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't, you know, one, I don't want to, you know, we're, we're trying to fix twelve years, we're not going to, it's not a good idea to do it overnight, but I think this gets us close, it fits in with, you know, and, you know, part of the, the, let me, let me kind of talk about commercial, because it's, it's going to be a different direction on the same thing, so maybe that'll.
Just one quick question. So this was, wasn't done for twelve years. What, what would you anticipate we should redo this or look at this again in five years and three years or?
Well, I can, I can tell you that, that Casa Grande, Queen Creek, Mesa annually do their fee schedules. Now, not everything changes in the fee schedule, but they, they present them. So if something's going to be fixed, it's going to, every year, they go, so I, I, my guess is that the, the probably for, for building permit type stuff, every three years is probably a good point at which you need to really kind of look at it, make sure you're covering, you know, things and, and, you know, the activity level and stuff like that matches up.
So we could put that in it, just like looking at our other fee schedules sooner than we have in the past.
Yes, absolutely.
And so maybe the reason these other places are doing it so more often is because they have more activity.
Well, i, it, part of it's that, part, you know, they have the, you know, most of the, or at least like Mesa, they have budget analysts, they have people that are just focused on that, you know, I get to put this much time into it and stuff, so, but I, I think, you know, we definitely want to, you know, part of our goal was just to get fees for things that come up that we don't even have fees for right now. I mean, it's like the day after they did this, they realized they had to, they made up fees because we didn't cover things. So we're trying to clean that up, too. So let me, so just going back to the tier table thing, I keep saying that magic, it, it's just, I have not figured out who, this thing came out, probably it's in the, the old UBC from the eighties, so somebody came up with this structure to have the different tiers and the, the values. Ours right now, in the lower tier, so if you're doing a project that's one K to twenty-five K, you're paying basically seventeen sixty-eight per thousand of value for your permit. If you go to a million dollar permit, you're paying like two dollars per thousand. So it's, it's kind of skewed. So we did come up with some minimum fees, because if somebody comes in with a five hundred square foot house, which I guess is plausible at a dollar twenty, that may not cover our cost. So we did come up with some minimums, so a residential home with all the inspections, plan review, at the minimum size, which would be about seven hundred and eight square feet, we're going to charge eight hundred and fifty dollars. So if you're less than seven hundred, it's still going to be eight hundred and fifty. Once you go to seven-ten, now you're on the dollar twenty, and it just kind of goes up from there. So, okay, so for manufactured homes, we want to tie the fee directly to the state fee. Now, there's some other cities in language, and I've got to kind of negotiate this with Joel, but there, I believe there's a way that we can say, since they do their process to come up with their fees, that because we have the IGA, ours just, when theirs changes, ours changes. Right now, they're up to three hundred and sixty dollars for a manufactured home set, ours is currently two hundred, and so we, you know, we kind of leaving a lot of money on the table with that, so. And there's the factory-built building, all those fees get dealt with by the state. We can't exceed those, but we can definitely, you know, ask for the same, so that's what we want to hope to fix. So for commercial projects, so right now, commercial kind of works the same way. We have kind of a homemade valuation table, and I'm guessing it was even probably the same money even prior to two thousand six. It looks kind of, just some different information on it. It has fees for libraries, which you build once every ten, twenty years, it has fees for bowling alleys, but it doesn't have a fee for doctor's office, you know? So we've got things that are real common that it doesn't cover, and things that are uncommon that it actually talks about. So what we want to do for the valuation is to adopt the, the International Code Council, the company that puts out the building codes and all that stuff, also puts out a document called the Building Valuation Table. And so they gather information, so, you know, Bureau of Statistics and Labor and all those different things, and they come out and they, based on the type of use, whether it's a church, an assembly, a business, a nursing home, which would be an I, they, and versus the construction material, come up with a per-square-foot value. And one of the reasons we want to use this is, right now, we ask for the value. Some people give us a legitimate value. Discount Tire, I think, came in and said, they're, they're building a million dollar building. We have other people that, you know, they're building fifty thousand dollars, but they tell us it's twenty. So, you know, sometimes our fee will go up above that, but, and then the other problem is there, everybody has a different idea of what amount of, what the work that you're doing needs to be included. Now, the building code basically says from the foundation through the finish is what we're looking to get the value on. We get people give us the value with the site preparation, so they're up another half million or so dollars and paying a fee on that, that the person who actually paid attention and did it without that doesn't have to pay. So using the, the table, and then again, using the square footage, we can come up with a number and we can equalize. So, you know, Circle K comes in, Quick Trip comes in, they're both the same type of building, we're going to take the square footage and multiply it by that multiplier, so their fees are relative to each other into the size of their building. And we don't want to have to come up with our own fee table, so we want to adopt that one. So we had the two tire stores came in, one of them came in and their valuation was a million dollars, we had the other one come in and their valuation was seven hundred and thirty-eight-five. So the per-square-feet valuation for the first one calculated at a hundred and thirty dollars per square foot. So I took their valuation, I took the square footage of the building that they gave us, divided it in, and that's what I get. The second one came in at a hundred and nineteen sixty-seven. So those are the valuations for those two buildings. They are actually two different types, they're both masonry, concrete block, but one wanted to be a different category than the other, so that's part of the valuation difference. So per the valuation table we're proposing to adopt, the first one would have been a valuation of a hundred and twenty-four forty-five. So the price they gave us was actually a little better than what that table would have generated. The second one would have been ninety-four eighty-three. So in both cases, they gave us what would be legitimate numbers, but they're different still, and, you know, we hope to get them equalized. So having the valuation table, which gets everybody kind of on the same playing field, makes it easier on us, it's a national thing, it's printed, every, you know, all the national builders know what it is, they know where to go find the number and stuff. That helps in, in getting that simplicity that we're looking for. But like resident, the residential, we really want to try to get away from a tier and all that stuff. So we ran the numbers and, I'll get you there. Okay, so for the, so we, we settled on using, instead of the square footage and a, just a dollar multiplier times the square footage, we settled on using the percentage of the valuation, okay? And so the first store was seventy-six eighty square feet, its current valuation based on the table we want to adopt is nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, so about forty-five thousand less than what they told us. The permit cost that we charged for them was eleven thousand six hundred and sixty. And again, that goes through that thing, and we figure out the building, then we multiply it by sixty-five percent, and then we've got the other. Our simplicity-based proposal, which is to charge a fee of one point two percent of the valuation, in this case, it would have led to a fee of eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine, so two hundred dollars less. They find that the, they take their square footage times that value in the table, they multiply it by point zero one two, they have the fee, includes the plan review, all of that. And so we ran that number through, I didn't list all the scenarios, just because it would get kind of confusing, but, so like Wendy's, just to give you a second example, their two thousand six fee for the Wendy's was thirty-four fifty-five, based on what we're proposing for the twenty eighteen, it'd be thirty-six eighty-five. So it'd be like two hundred and thirty dollars difference for a two hundred thousand dollar Wendy's.
Pretty close. We know they're pretty close, so.
And I don't have it in here, but we did compare this to the other cities. I've got a whole spreadsheet of their tiers, and I, just like I did with the house, I ran the same things through, and, you know, we're in that same area. So we're not out of line compared to what everybody else. So, but I think the simplicity of the methodology and stuff is going to be a selling point, and a lot of people are going to, you know, it's going to help us when we go to our new program, people are going to be able to apply online, because they're going to be able to easily get to the, the number and pay the fees and stuff. So we think that that's a very valuable thing. We are proposing a technology fee. Mesa right now has a four percent with an eight hundred cap, which is what we're looking at. We're going to, our, you know, when we get this new program, all our inspectors are going to have iPads out in the field, we may have printers, but we want them to be able to, you know, do stuff in the field. We need new computers, we need stuff to do digital plan review, and so as we want to keep that up, then we also need to be bringing in money to dedicate to that. And I think it goes back to you.
Thank you.
Wow.
So.
That was fun.
Was that a lot?
That was.
Are you still all choked up? You were kind of getting choked up before.
Yeah, I'm getting choked up again.
So we're, we're looking at coming back, what we don't have in front of you, and again, we can send you a PDF so you can see this, so we'll, we'll get that put in. But we're talking about coming back on Monday, the fourteenth of January, that's your next Monday night meeting, as a work session. I think I have my dates, I'll get with Joel or Kathy on this, that depending on what you do on that day, you can direct us, we figured by Thursday, we have to post these for sixty days. They will be in table format, they won't be in a slideshow PowerPoint. So there are, I think Dave's are four or five pages in a spreadsheet, ours might be two or three pages. So I calculated about sixty-four days from January seventeenth that they would go on our city website. You would have a public hearing on March nineteenth, but we are proposing that these go into effect July first, not, just to, just to go with the fiscal year. So that was a lot to cover tonight. If you have questions, you can ask us between now and January fourteenth. So I think that's the, that's all we have for now, so any other thoughts, questions?
It actually makes a lot of sense.
So, that's unusual for me or for us, I guess, or it makes sense, so. Anyway, so that was it, I think we kind of covered A to Z on, on fees, development fees, engineering fees, permit fees, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for bearing with us, that was kind of a long presentation, so.
Thank you.
I would just call it something different from magic.
Magic?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of ideas.
Well, it's hard to figure out, it's hard to explain to people, so it's not, you know? And again, we can really, again, it goes back to the idea, we can really only charge for what it's costing us, we're not supposed to, and I think a simpler approach might be better.
I, I will say, the courts have been very clear that a rational nexus has to exist on what we can charge to the customer service, and as we think about customer service and we think about where we're going, we're going to need that technology and ability to produce with the same amount of employees we have. And I think the longstanding policy of this mayor and city council and others before, that growth pays for itself, or new. that growth pay for itself, or new growth, is part of this system that we're setting up as well, so that, that doesn't put additional pressure on your existing sales tax base or any other type of revenue base. Thank you, Your Honor.
Chief, do you have an ETA on how long you'll take? Do we need a break?
If we, it depends on how long.
If you're really nice to me, I can do it in less than a minute.
And are these the same, chief, the same item basically twice?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So public presentation and discussion on Resolution 1836, authorizing PD to enter into agreement with ASU.
Mayor, City Council, staff, Tom Kelly, Police Chief of Petey, Youngton, Arizona. I can do both of these together, and one, they're pretty much similar, almost identical.
So the other one is 18582, Presentation on Resolution 1846 with Glendale.
So what it is, is intergovernmental agreement between both the Arizona State University and Glendale Police Department, or the City of Glendale, for police services, it's basically for overtime to hire our officers to go back for concerts, potentially the Super Bowl, assuming it would come back, and those other sporting events. And it's a hire-back program that they would be doing on off-duty time, and using police services when they don't have enough to supplement their own staff. This is similar to another intergovernment agreement that you approved earlier this year.
And is this on consent for tomorrow?
On consent for tomorrow.
Yeah. Any questions on this?
So in essence, it's really nothing, there's no changes from what we've done in the past.
Yeah, it's no cost to the city, this is just basically an off-duty assignment for the officers, should they request our assistance, and then they do it on a volunteer basis.
And all the insurance is pretty much the same, we cover the workers' comp, but they cover the liability and such things.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I think we all have taken it in, and with that, we'll be adjourned.